Down with me on the pledge of allegiance offered by Councilman Brad Hemphill, following by the opening prayer by Councilman Mike Anizola.
Let you be the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the review of justice for all.
Lord God, heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We ask you to please hear our prayers as we open this work session, Lord, and we work stuff out for this great community of ours. We are thankful for our leaders of our city of Safford, our employees, and we give you thanks in this day. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Okay, let's go and bring us to item five and six, if we have any. Okay, let's go right on into the employee compensation, Lydia, item seven.
Can you hear me now? Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening we'll be talking about employee compensation. On the staff pay increases, we're going to be entering our first phase of the longevity pay increase for our fifty-one employees, which is approximately thirty-three percent of the employee base will receive a three percent pay increase on their anniversary month. That's going to cost us seventy-three thousand five hundred dollars, and that does include all of the employee-related expenses. An additional pay increase, if we gave one percent pay increase to all staff in July twenty twenty-one, it would be less than the proposed premium share that we talked at a previous work session of a hundred and nineteen thousand thirty-four dollars, costing us a hundred and ten thousand dollars, and that also does include the employee-related expenses.
That's the same, same thing, because on the other slide, when you say include employee-related expense, they're worded different. Is there some reason why they're worded different?
It's just a typing error. There's just an S missing there. But yes, they mean the same thing. If you have any, any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Lydia, why, why would you assume, or not assume, but why, why the entire employees for a one percent raise instead of finding out the reason why we have employees that are leaving us and trying to up that area? Why not, why not strategically focus on the areas that are underpaid and bring them up to what would be quote-unquote current?
Um, well, if...
To me, I just feel like all we're trying to do is massage, okay, hold on, John. I feel like all we're trying to do is massage the insurance hit is all we're trying to do, when that's what we tried to do last year. John, go ahead.
We just basically were trying to respond to the request that, that potentially that we wanted a salary increase. What we didn't want to do, and what I in particular didn't want to do, was to come back with a really developed plan that goes in-depth on a variety of issues, because we have some issues with compression and, and other stuff as well. I just didn't feel that the timing was right for that right now. So, we came back with something that basically would use no more than would have been the shift in the health insurance. Clearly, there are other issues that we need to address. I just didn't think that council would want to have that discussion at this point.
I know that I had asked or stated that I thought we needed to keep up with the cost of living, and that may have partially facilitated this. I, I do think that the cost of living's gone...
Three percent. We're just talking about one percent. I, I think we've got to consider it, and that, that doesn't have anything to do with the other three percent every other year. I mean, that's not keeping, that's not keeping up with the Joneses. I think we've got to look at it.
And again, I don't disagree, but part of the issue we're running into is we have a stupid two-step process. So, one would assume that if we do three percent COLA this year, we're going to end up having to do one again next year, right? Because we want to make sure that we're kind of addressing both of these steps the same way, so...
Well, and that's why I'm thinking that that one percent plus, plus the other three, I mean, that, that four percent, and next year, some more will get that. It's not keeping up, but it's a step in the right direction.
And again, I think traditionally what one would see when it comes to employee compensation is essentially two things. You would see a COLA, which would address your concern about cost of living, and it also addresses, you know, some of the compression stuff. And then, the other issue would be some kind of merit-based, you know, because I know we've had conversations in the past that, you know, one of the issues was across-the-board raises. We always were kind of reticent to do that because it was felt, you know, you always have some employees that perform better than others, and the way to get at that is to use some kind of a merit-based system. And so, usually, what you traditionally see as part of your annual budget process is a COLA and a merit coming together. So, you could do a five-year average of the CPI for the Western urban, and then have that as a jumping off point, and then you could get into things like, okay, we're going to do zero to two percent merit. You have a scale based on your evaluation. Your rating in that evaluation would then equate to an area where you would get some kind of a bump if you in fact reach that level for merit. So, again, there are things that we could get at. The thing I wanted to avoid was saying, okay, we just asked for the STEP program. We haven't even implemented year one, and so, now we're going to come to council three-quarters of the way through the budget and say, hey, you know what? Let's throw that out. Let's start all over, and let's look at salaries again, right? So, again, it was, it was something where I didn't want to, I didn't want to do too much at this point. So, and we're open to suggestions. I just didn't want to go too far too fast.
I would, I would hope we don't throw that out, and I hope we keep it, but it's not enough. I mean, you're, I mean, it's kind of like rewarding somebody with two-thirds of what it takes to keep up. That's not a reward. So, I was, I was hoping we'd have a, something across the board, and then a merit raise that we already implemented last year, or that we said we would.
Okay. Well, again, only like a third of the employees will get the STEP, the longevity. So, are we saying we want to do everybody all at one time and not do the longevity in phases?
I'm saying I like the one percent raise for everybody, and the STEP thing for the other third. Next year, we'll deal with that third, the next third.
So, I know that some have mentioned that they didn't care for the staging. What if you started with one and a half percent for everybody and not stage it, and then do another add-on? Let's, let's not do this, because we have an opportunity now before we get into it to not do the staging and the splitting. So, what if you took the three percent, you made it one and a half for all employees, and then you decided if you were comfortable with some percentage increase on top of that, that all employees would get at the same time?
Would that include all employees if, if you cut it to one point five?
Well, you know, it would be a little bit more because the third is in this first phase, and two-thirds are in the second. But what you would be doing, instead of doing three percent, three percent, you would do one and a half for everybody at the same time, which would essentially be your COLA right now, because that's where the, the CPI is. And then, if you wanted to add another percent on top of that, let's say the percent we're proposing, then everybody would get two and a half percent.
And just to clarify on the one percent, I, I thought our directive was to rather quickly move the money that we decided not to use to offset the premium costs to a raise for all employees.
And that's essentially what it is, a little bit less. But again, when we, when we try to, so if we tried to back into the, the number, then you end up with a percentage of increase. So, we thought, well, let's, you know, let's not be greedy, right? Let's just do the one percent. And then, I mean, I don't think there, I don't know that anybody's really a big fan of the, maybe they are, but of the staging of this, the breaking employees in half. So, why not just make the three percent, one and a half across the board, and then use that as the COLA, and then you could add one percent this year, and that way, everybody would be getting a raise at the same time. And it's, it's clean, it's simple, and we don't end up with trying to parse things and pick and...
I think it does away with the incentive part of, of the tiered raise, because that was, that's based on an, an evaluation, correct?
It would be, and we could still go to that eventually, but I think we would probably have to adjust our evaluation forms so that when you applied the potential bonus, that you had an even distribution in terms of the scoring, and then you would decide at what level a bonus would kick in, right? Because you're not going to, you're not rewarding average performance. So, I think that would be an option. I just don't know how we would do that in such short notice. So, maybe we did, you know, the one and a half plus the one this year with the understanding that as we go into the next budget cycle, we would come back with another tool to do those assessments and then use that as a merit mechanism. Well, yes and no, because longevity, for me, is something that would be longer term. So, I would, my recommendation on longevity would be a one-time payout, starting at ten years, and then do ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty, right? I mean, longevity isn't two years. So, to me, it's more of a STEP program in my assessment. So, again, if you do what is more traditional, you do a merit and a COLA, and you base it on an empirical number, which is the CPI, which is the cost of living, which over time, as we deal with the compression issues, will help us alleviate getting them again. And then, you go to the merit-based system, which then allows us to then reward better performance and not treat every single employee exactly the same. That's, that's what I'm recommending. Because the longevity, the way it's structured, really isn't. Longevity, it's not even shortevity. I mean, it's every two years. It's a STEP program, basically.
Any other questions?
I just said one. I'd, I'd like to see what that would cost us and not have another work session to do it, but bring it back to us in another meeting.
Yeah, we don't even have any more work sessions on it. Bring it back to the next meeting.
All right, so one and a half percent on...
Hang on, Arnold's got something, too.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, there was, there was a lot of effort in the way it was put together last year, in the base pay, trying to adjust for the compression and the different levels and stuff, and it just seems like we're abandoning it, not even in a, a year.
Well, again, that's why I didn't want to bring it. That's why I brought what I did.
I don't know in the survey, I don't know that, or if there was a survey, did the employees comment on how they liked what we did last year? If that was going to address things, we were talking about people in the entry level, too, bringing it up the base, and that's what caused us to do the stuff on the other tiers and stuff and maintain the, the compression or the in-between percentages between. It, it just seems like a lot of effort was put in last year to abandon it all of a sudden.
Fair enough.
And on the employee survey that we did, it was only focused on benefits, not on compensation.
But, but you did a lot of work last year to get to what we thought was going to be something we were going to be utilizing for a while and see what happened, how it affected. I still heard what Mr. McGoy said about the one percent also cost of living and stuff. That, that's still probable, too. But, I don't, I don't want to run on what we did last year, because we put a lot of effort into it. I thought, well, not me personally, of course, but I know this lady did.
Well, and I think, again, based on the way we're discussing it, if you take the three percent and you make it one and a half percent across the board, you really haven't abandoned it. What you've done is really made it applicable to all employees every year instead of splitting them. So, you're basically doing, from a cost perspective, something similar. It won't be exact. But, but again, one of the reasons I didn't want to have this discussion, because there are a lot of nuances here. There are a lot of different ways to approach it. And so, again, this is why we brought what we did.
I, I personally think, if anything, you should leave it, because to kind of address the Councilman McGoy's issue by him saying that cost of living has gone up, I think cost of living's gone up, and I don't think a lot of people in the community, their cost of living's gone up. So, we're sitting here saying, okay, we're going to massage it. But, I think if we, if you did the one percent across the board and left the STEP program, that staff was so into to bring, to bring it to us, for us to even put it before a vote and vote on it, I think that, me personally, that, that's where you should stay, and that's where it should be, be at, because I agree with Councilman Lopez of all the time and effort that was put into it, just to abandon something because we're trying to make something else happen. I think the one percent is, is going towards a, by the cost of a hundred and ten thousand dollars, which, you know, is a little less, you know, nine, nine thousand thirty-four dollars less than what the proposed premium share would have been. So, I don't know where we're getting the one point five, but either that or bring the one point five back to us in, what, three weeks? Is that what you're saying, Councilman Sill?
I don't know. I'm going to look at it. I'd, I'd rather look at it in the next meeting.
And the question is, do we want to? Do we want to just go with the STEP program as implemented? It's there for two years. Do the one percent this year, and we can always have this discussion at a later date. Again, one of the reasons I didn't want to bring it is because I know council doesn't like being caught off-guard with some of this stuff, so I was trying to keep it simple and stay within the confines of what we basically discussed at our last meeting. So, that's why it looked the way it did.
And I like leaving it like it is, too, because there are people who are anticipating a three percent raise this year, plus they would get the one percent on top of that. All of a sudden, we cut that, we cut that back to two and a half percent. It's been a long time coming. I'm in favor of leaving it.
There was some other benefits in what we did last year. CDLs got a little bit more, certification got a little bit more. There was stuff to try to, there was, there was things all through it that were benefit, and to reward the employees for taking initiative and certain efforts. Even if they got something that wasn't necessarily in their work field at this time, and we could still utilize them, that's, I'm not ready to abandon it yet, and I will look at one and a half percent also. I'd like to see those numbers.
I would, too.
Okay. Good?
So, when we say one and a half percent, you're looking at one and a half percent means splitting the three into two distinct parts, right? One and a half percent for all employees?
No, I, I thought that they'd say, leave, give us the price of what one and a half percent would be leaving the STEP program in place. That's what I thought I understood.
Fifty percent more than that, right? So...
Well, instead of, instead of just saying that, just bring us the numbers back.
So, what I, what I'm saying is leave the program like we got, look at a one and a half percent, and if you want to call it cost of living, that's fine by me across the board.
That's what you guys are saying. I didn't mention the one point five percent. I think...
Well, we were going to look at the numbers.
Yeah, look at the numbers of one point. Go ahead, Councilman Sill.
Well, I thought what John was proposing is do away with the three percent. We just do a one and a half percent plus the one percent on top.
So, that'd be two and a half?
Right.
Yeah. So, what are you wanting, what are you wanting to see the numbers on?
Well, I would prefer to leave the three in there and then look at, at the one.
Oh, across the board, right?
Well, we're already seventy-three thousand for the three percent that are there this time, plus the hundred and ten thousand for the one percent on top of that. So, some people would get a four percent, and others would get a one, and then the next time around, the third would get three percent.
Three percent. Yeah, I, I mean, for you to run your budgets, if you're wanting to do that, I think, I think just leave it the way that you just proposed to us. Three percent. Yeah, I, I mean, for you to run your budgets, if you're wanting to do that, I think, I think just leave it the way that you just proposed to us, if we're all in agreements with that, but we wanted to see numbers of one point five.
And, and the one percent that they're, they began recommending.
Well, the one percent is the one ten.
Yes, that, that, okay.
So one and a half would be like one sixty, roughly.
Okay.
I wanna clarify something, Arnold. So all the work that Lydia did last year, we're not changing any of that, so all, bringing the base pay up, all asserts, that's all in place. We're not changing any of that, that's, that's in place, so we'll be moving forward from that.
Okay.
Just wanna make sure you understood, but we're not, we're not going back from that.
Okay, good.
So...
Thank you, Mr. McGoy.
Where are we?
You should've told me that, we're not going back, Arnold.
We weren't gonna say anything to him.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
So we leave the steps in place?
Yes.
Yes, and then do one and a half or one?
I'm fine with one.
That's what one is.
So basically, just what we got now.
What we got now, alright.
That's a long way around the bend.
Yeah, yeah.
Did Mr. McGoy have something? Did you have a question?
I was just saying one percent.
Okay, just fine, okay.
One, one, one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, uh, John, the recreational amenities.
Okay, at our last meeting, we had a discussion, um, regarding, regarding recreational amenities, which essentially landed us on a discussion about parks, essentially. And so, basically, what staff did, and what I have a, I guess I'll put it up here, um, if I can make it work. Alright, so what Lance went ahead and did is he tried to say, if we're going down the road where we wanna do parks, and the issue came up with the floodplain, and so we decided to say, let's provide a map, which is really hard to see, but I'll zoom in just for the sake of argument, so let's go down here. So you can see, there's the wastewater treatment plant, that's a detention basin, and usually the floodplain comes kinda right across this area here, right through here, kind of on the backside of the wastewater treatment plant. But then what Lance did, and what you have on that sheet, which is probably easier to look at, so for example, um, you can see First Park on here, and then in contrast, you see, um, the Ed Ragland, uh, basketball court over there, also on the side over here. But so, for example, this would be an area where you might potentially wanna put a park, and that's at Tenth and Tenth. So the document that he's given you, which is kinda hard to show because of the size of it, was essentially us identifying our infrastructure. So if you go up here by Discovery Park, you can see all of the, the walking path areas, you can see the, there's a little space up here in the corner, Discovery Park and Eighth Avenue. You've got, over here, you've got, um, uh, Glen Meadows. And so, basically, the blue areas give us a potential to put something in, in a park format, and again, this one is El Paso, which we're just starting, now it shows it in red, but we're just beginning it, so the idea was to say, the conversation turned from going down by the river and having a, a facility there, to maybe making it more neighborhood oriented. And then these are kinda the parcels for us that are available, and really, the ones that don't end up underwater at some point are, is this one here at Fourteenth Avenue, which is the red square there on the left. And then this other one down here in the, in the blue, which is the Tenth and Tenth Avenue, uh, property, and then again, this is another detention basin. So in terms of putting a park in, it all depends on what kind of amenities you're looking for, and your choices are somewhat limited. Obviously, you can put things in parks, but you gotta be cognizant, if you put them in detention bases, at some point, they're gonna be underwater. So again, I kind of looking for guidance from you guys in terms of what types of amenities you're looking for, and this kinda gives you an idea of what kinda spaces are available to do those things.
You say the blue has the most...
The blue is where we, we own it, but there's nothing built there, so for example, Tenth and Tenth, this is that detention basin off of just, uh, north of Relation, and then again, as you go up this way, you can see blue would be potential, again, this is La Tierra here in red, but then there's a detention basin here, and of course, this is Glen Meadows over here, and then the blue again would be an, an area where we might be able to do something like a dog park or something like that. So red is existing infrastructure, and you can see the path system here, and then the blue is potential sites that you could use for new, uh, amenities.
No questions, huh? Down by the, uh, treatment plant, a, a little, uh, area to the south, is that, is that all we purchased? Was that one to the south of that?
This?
Yes. We didn't purchase that field?
That, I believe, this is ours, but it's...
How about the stuff to the south of it?
This? There's a vertical piece right here, very narrow, probably no more than about this far over, that runs the length here. So we do own that, and then there's a little piece here at the end that we also own.
Yeah, I thought we bought more acreage from the bird knows, we just bought a...
Just a thin, if, if you could see like a parcel map, almost where the color changes here is basically, that's, ours is that little darker, uh, wedge here, rectangle here. So it's relatively narrow. But again, who knows, it may offer the opportunity to trade it for other parcels down there, I mean, maybe we could do a swap and, trade it for something that's a, a better shape for our purposes.
I, I thought we had bought more property along Eighth, myself, I guess we didn't, I don't know.
And the, I, I mean, we, we have this, not that I'm aware of anyway, but I know we have this, but again, it's a detention basin, so it would flood at some point. And this is Fourteenth, and this is, um, El Paso, so I guess this would be Eighth over here. And then you could see the, the basketball court. So again, you know, in terms of things that don't flood and have any real size to them, you have somewhat limited choices. Unless we could do some kind of a land swap down by the wastewater treatment plant with what we own.
I just have a question. Why don't we, because we enter in agreements with, uh, schools and other people all the time, why don't we have an agreement with the schools where maybe we could, um, take over the mowing or whatever, as long as it was used, as long as it could be used for after-school facilities for practices and stuff like that? And whenever the school's not using it, that we can use it as, uh, tournament play or something like that? Why has that not ever been a question raised? I mean, they're both funded by taxpayers.
Yeah, and I think we're in a position right now that we could sit down and have that discussion and see where we could go, there's some other things that, um, influence that at the moment, that I think may give more of an opportunity, maybe than it has been in the past, so that's certainly something we could look into.
Cause I think if we would have, if we would enter in an agreement with the schools and start, and, at least Safford schools, and start, uh, um, really actively searching that to where it's like a facility that can be used, it's already there, and we say, hey, let's, uh, you know, we, we, can we use it as, as that? Share in the, uh, agreements or whatever, and, or, and/or the same thing with the, um, it's almost like the, the areas by the wastewater treatment had hit a roadblock, why can't we do the same thing with the county park? And say, yeah, I know that they're interested in lighting up some of those fields, if some of those fields are in regulation, why don't we say, hey, let's partner up, and, uh, when our utilities are, are not too swamped and busy, that maybe we can send them out there, and we could, you know, light it up or, or hang lights or something, I don't know, I don't know why we, I don't know, when, when other entities already have these facilities up there, why are we not actively searching them out and saying, what can we do? We're a good neighbor.
We can.
And, and, uh, work with them, and then, um, you know, they have the possibility of building more ballfields out that way, you know, I mean, I love our parks, I think our parks are there, I just think we need, I, I just wanted, I'd like to see a facility where you could, you could have different things, like what the vice mayor has asked for, you know, I, I don't know, I, I'll call it handle pickleball, that's what. And you know, it's like, what, you know, we could possibly build that at First Park, um, where there's, uh, you know, some, some entertainment there and stuff, but to build more parks, I'm not, I'm not necessarily in favor of that, I'm more in favor of a facility, something that we can start, start moving towards that, or partnering up with the schools or the county.
I think that's a good idea, Jason, to look into it differently.
That is in the general plan, by the way.
To answer your question, Mayor, regarding the, the schools, I've actually had the conversation with the schools about an agreement for behind the middle school, that old practice field, as well as that field over behind, uh, Leif Nelson. That's one of the best foot, fields in town, and they're all on board to, to work some sort of agreement, to where we can use those for, for city practices and whatnot, so we've already had those initial discussions.
I think we discussed the one, uh, off of Make Avenue, but weren't we talking about doing some kind of parking facility or something? Is that available to purchase, and we could put?
Yeah, I think, I don't know if they wanna sell it, we've got that agreement to use the Ed Ragland Park and then that grass area, and then we brought, you know, a proposal to a parking lot, and obviously, it's their property, so we don't wanna put an infrastructure in their property, I, I don't know if they're o- open to selling that, um, we could have that discussion though.
Or just develop it, like I think you were talking about.
Yeah, we, we talked about putting a, a parking lot there so we could develop it, but, you know, put, put infrastructure into somebody else's property, and then they stopped their agreement with us, and they've got the facility, so I get that part too, so. We could definitely talk that conversation and see if they're willing to, I know they wanna still use that once in a while for school stuff, so I don't think they would really be open to selling it, but we could ask the conversation.
We were close to having an agreement on that once before.
For selling it?
And it, by the Ed Ragland, but they also wanted us to take over the pump, too, and...
That well?
Yeah, that well, and that, that seemed to have killed it a little bit there, plus, we were losing ballfields, not making any gain on them. We, we don't have anywhere for these kids to practice even. And so, and we do light something up, in order to get tournaments here, the lighting has to be ASA or SA, whatever it is, compliant, the candle strength and everything has to be within their regulations, so that's, if we wanna draw teams here to have tournaments and stuff, that's, we have to at least get the correct lighting, even out at the fairgrounds. And, you know, so that's something we'd have to look at too, not just go throw up some poles.
No, I don't mean that, I know that the county has been, in fact, they've had bids going out to light it up. And so, of course, there's schematics, right? I mean, we can't just go and throw poles up without schematics anyways, that would be crazy. So the thing is, is you have the schematics, you have the plans, and then, you know, the city could say, hey, let's, let's do that, and I mean, all they, all we'd ask for in return is just throw a sign, hey, lit up by the city of Safford, you know, kudos, you know, whatever, atta boys, gosh. It's just, to me, it's like, that's the big thing, is, is, we shouldn't be in competition with this, with Safford schools, we shouldn't be in competition with, with Graham County, uh, uh, their little rec center, but we can definitely be a good partner with them and see green grass go out there, see lit up fields, and then start, start pulling ourselves this way, start pulling ourselves south. You know, I, I, I mean, we know that there's not gonna be too much growth down by the, uh, um, by the river, but we can start pulling ourselves to the south, and we can start pulling ourselves to the east, and, and see, you know, those things, I hate to throw out, uh, an expensive ten-year plan or whatever that was, that was drawn up, that looks really nice and pretty, but at the same time, at least it got us today, talking about recreation and, and where we're lacking, and, and what we should be doing, and what we should be actively seeking and, and running towards. And I, and I don't, I believe that John wants to run with this as hard as he can too, um, you know, I mean, we all know that we're gonna be behind an eight ball if we don't do something. And I don't mean that in a competitive, in a competitive way, but yet we will be if we don't start acting on something. You know, we need to, we need to some, we need to secure some growth in Safford as well, and say that we are actively not just working on roads and, and what the public would say, just giving money to the employees, but we're actively saying, hey, we want you here, and here's our parks, here's our recreations, and this is what we're doing, this is what we're moving towards. So I, I, I agree, I just think, I think a pickleball would be great at First Park, and I think we start partnering up with our, with our community that are already actively running them. I mean, the county has a lot of ballfields, I'm sure they would love to have our parks go out there and mow them and fertilize them.
They put up lights on those, uh, little soccer fields last year, and that was, uh, AYSO and Little League, I think, got a grant from FMI, and they actually, county didn't have anything other than allow them to do it, and they got those up on those four fields on the east side there. And that added some extended hours of soccer for them, so.
And that, that was pretty expensive, but they have a twenty-five-year agreement to where the company that put it in is gonna maintain it for them. And they were pre-shot, you know, to go at, pre-engineered to shoot on the ground with less amount of lighting. And again, the twenty-five year, that they're gonna take care of it for the county, which I believe, taking care of twenty-five years is pretty good, but it's a soccer field. Uh, Mr. Henry, on that one retention pond that's south of the bus barn of the Safford School, hey, there's nowhere for anybody to park there, there's nowhere, that's a big old field, it's got somewhat a makeshift back stop down in there. I didn't know when you started construction on Fourteenth Avenue, cause there's a wa- it, it runs off into the ditch if it were to ever get filled, just on that south side of the hill. Couldn't we bridge that and make an entry level there, talking to the school and whoever owns some of that, we should have an easement through there, I believe, but, and make an entrance into there to where they can park and practice?
Well, we'd have to obtain some property from the school to make a parking lot there, but my, my discussion with the school on that field that's just north of there, on the Leif Nelson property, was to somehow build an access to where we could build a little parking area on the school property at the south end of their field, to where both those fields could be utilized from the school side, from the north side of that retention pond.
And you said they were, you said they were favorable to your discussion, alright?
Yes, yes, and I, I had a discussion with Philip Nelson, and, and he's all for, you know, helping us, working with us to utilize those fields, cause that, that one field the schools got back there is actually a great field, it's in good shape, so. Be nice to build some sort of a parking area, then they would have to access through the, through the school property to get back there, but we would have access to both of those fields from the school side.
Oh, would you water it?
Well, the, school waters theirs with their system, we, we wouldn't water that retention basin, it's...
No, not that one, okay.
The school.
I thought you moved, I thought you moved into, towards the bus barn.
No.
Yeah, the retention pond would be fine.
Yeah.
For practice, cause there's nowhere for them to even practice.
Yeah, and that, that retention pond actually has an old water system all the way around it, it's got a, I'm sure it's just junk, but it's, it's got a sprinkling system all around the top of it that was probably put in years and years ago that, you know...
But there's, there's no access to them, and that's...
All the wells are down there on that little accessway you're talking about, everything's right in that accessway, and there's, there's controls there, and there's a little well there, and be pretty hard to make that an entryway into there, so I think if we use the school side, it could be done.
Restrict it to T-ball, they don't need much, couple of bases, they don't even know what direction they're running.
You could put one of your backstops on the other side, we'd have two back to back.
Put them up somewhere.
Is that a ten-year plan, a backstop?
He probably is.
Go ahead.
No, I, I really think that, uh, you know, when we look at the map, I remember a few years ago, um, when Eric Buckson was here, they brought us a map similar to this, and he showed some of the excess property, they called it, that the city owned, and you could basically park the car on it, that's about all you could do, but it was something we could sell, but I don't know what anybody would have use for it for. So as you look at the map, uh, down at the plug, the floodplain, we don't have a whole lot of property that's, uh, big enough to do a whole lot with. We'd have to purchase property, uh, the county already has property, um, and, uh, I'm not worried about just mowing the lawns, we could spend some money, maybe out there and, and, uh, and do things that would benefit, uh, everyone, um, rather than having to purchase property and then start from scratch.
Well, we agree.
Practice, practice in town and play out there.
Well, that would be it, I mean, so let's just, let's just put, let's just be real, and here, here's the deal. They're going out to practice, so if we're, if we're, if anybody signs up and they're going out to play a game out there, and we help, we get with the county, and we really wanna help beautify their facility, they're coming back through Safford to go home. They're gonna stop because the kids wanna, either Dairy Queen or a freaking Thirst Buster or McDonald's, um, whatever they want. They're, you know, they're gonna shop, and then they'll probably stop and hit Walmart on the way going home, and so the sales tax money is, is, is coming back to us. And we're not having to look for property. It's out of the floodplain. We're spending, what, four point something million dollars to get water infrastructure out there that we should be shovel-ready or, or I think, right? Is that supposed to start?
This year, I think.
And so, I mean, we, we, we felt that it was a need of some sort to free up water out there, to give them affluent water. And so I think it's, I think it's something that we should talk with the school, spend some monies there, and get them going, and focus on the facilities out there at the, and that's even if the county wants in on it. I mean, we have one county representative here. But if they even wanted in on it to where they, they like, hey, yeah, let's, they, I'm sure they would love to ease, have some easement on the burden of, of that place out there. And I think we can restructure a little bit of First Park. We have a beautiful, gosh dang, a skate park there. We have the, we have the water facilities there, slides. I mean, we have something that's uniquely different than our other communities. And we can offer a nice pickleball court that's, that's there. We just added parking there. I think if we beautify that, spend a little bit there and beautify that up, and, and focus south, I think is a win-win. That's me personally. And yes, does that mean you're doing away with the, the pretty picture plan that we, that you all received ten years ago? Possibly, but yet we're still focusing on beautifying the parks that are remaining and also expanding the facilities by spending some monies out there that we never, you know, wouldn't have, so. I, I think it's a win-win. I know that those, that Graham County Park is bank to bank on soccer nights, soccer days, and then even on their AYSO days, or not, that's soccer, their baseball, whatever, and then the softball. I, me, me.
I agree. And the thing is, whatever we do do, just, I, I mentioned the last, before, let's finish the job. Like you meant, okay, First Park, if we're going to expand a few little things, just make sure we have enough lighting there so that, you know, sun goes down, people don't have to run away. In other words, complete the job is what it's about.
Are you okay, are we okay to give at least John and Lance that direction?
I, I know we've got something brewing on Fourteenth Avenue. That's already going forward.
Playground's been ordered.
Yeah, I don't know, did we give them sufficient direction?
Well, I, I would like to, I would like to give them some, some monies. How much is too much for you guys? So they can put it on this budget.
Never too much.
I'd give them, I'd tell them, go for it. I mean, I. Man, I could throw a little bit of money. Go ahead, come on.
Oh, he's going to be the negative guy.
You can't throw the rain trench on us this far in now, dag gummit. We got rid of it down there in the floodplain.
Until.
No.
Until we solve the homeless population in First Park, I don't, I don't even know what a pickleball court looks like, but can you, can you sleep in it? Can you hide in it? Can you?
No.
Okay.
I just said that.
Little small tennis court.
So, so to answer your questions, and I'm going to push this right back on John. That's how they got their police station. Because I remember his predecessor said that he would take care of that, which was Joe Brudman, and now it falls under, now it falls under Glenn. So Glenn now has a, that's his deal. That's his baby. First Park is his baby.
I, I'm not, I'm not going to deny that he ever even suggested this, but is there any way to give Circle K some property so they'll build a new one further away from the park? I mean, that, that, the fact that those people go there to beg is why those people are there. It's not, it's not because it's a park.
But you know one thing I can say, going back and forth? There, there's not as big of a problem.
No, it's better. It's.
Yeah, it's a lot better. They're not sleeping around the motels. They're not, you know, coming across the street.
But our general public is still hesitant to go there and use that facility.
Yeah, well, it's, it's getting better, and it'll be better. I, I know it will.
But we're not totally not going to build something down there by the circle pond?
Well, Arnold, I almost feel like we are stopped.
I didn't mean it like that.
You jumped right out there, and now you got them all canceled in it.
Well, I mean, if you look at it.
We'll look at it tomorrow.
We'll look at it tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay, so John, is that, is that enough to help? Glenn, Glenn wants to address his, his.
I was just going to answer, if you put a pickleball court there and add lights to it and stuff, it will help with the homeless, because it's a lot easier to see what's going on and keep them out. So anything that lights up that we can, will help us, so we're not against that.
With lights there, even if we don't have pickleball, it would help with the problem.
Light it up.
And I think with the Ed Ragland, once we get another place to let them kids practice, then we can move forward with the parking lot and that kind of stuff. So that parallel parking is dangerous to them people. There's no doubt about it.
So Arnold, tell me why, tell me straight up why you are so stuck on building down there in the floodplain?
No, not, not in the, well.
It is.
We'll build the soccer fields in the floodplain and the baseball fields out of there. Because I'd rather sacrifice the soccer fields first, because it's easy to get to. We've got the water there. We have the infrastructure there. We need to trade some of that property around somehow. We will have dirt street going in there someday, and First Street and Fourteenth Avenue headed down there, and it's not going to be utilized for anything else down that deep.
So can I, okay, and I, I can adhere to agree with you, but there also can't be any growth down there. There can be a little bit of, of industrial growth that's out of the plain. But where would your, more of your growth be? Would it be south?
Yeah, we want to save the industrial portion of down there for industry, of course, that's what it is. But, so I wouldn't want to build anything into a floodplain that couldn't be sacrificed a little bit. Not really. I don't know where the boundaries are. It depends what flood criteria you're looking at. Total, not building it at all, somewhat building, yes, you can build at your own risk or whatever. I don't know the zoning levels of the flood down there. But we don't own all the property that would be needed. That's the thing.
So we'd have to buy it, what Councilon Seale suggested, but, I mean.
Whatever we do, I'd like them to be able, to be walked to, roamed to, or, you know, and lit, like Fourteenth Avenue. I'm hoping it's lit, right? Because, so the kids can get to there on their own.
So can we come away with a kind of a, a, a guesstimate on a recreational budget so that they can get moving on something? Can I, can I give them, can I give them two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Why don't we let them kind of come back with what they think they might need to get started on?
I think what we want to do is start with, we have to do some design, so I don't know if I'd put a lot of money out front. Let us take a look at some of the options. Let's take a look at, you know, some of the intergovernmental agreement options. Can we do smaller facilities? What would it take to get a practice field? So rather than just throw a dollar amount at it, let's, let us go back and kind of work through what we have here, because we have different components. We've got facilities, we've got IGA's, and we've got practice fields. And maybe they all come from a little different angle. Let's figure out how we phase it in, and let, let's get a little bit more something concrete before we just put a dollar amount and, and, and go forward with that. How's that sound?
And, and you with the county park, I, I agree with you that way too, you know. And hopefully, the chair will take it back to his bunch and say, these guys are probably serious. Maybe chair?
All right, Lance, did that help you any?
Yeah.
Yeah? Are you just saying yeah, or are you just saying yeah, you going out here too?
I'm thinking I might, yeah, with Alma, and add a little bit to El Paso Park. We already were going to add a little bit this year, but I, I'd like to get that. You know, we're putting a little basketball court in there, which we added on. I want to get this climbing tower, which we don't have any of those in the valley, and we've got an idea to put one, it's like a twenty-five-foot tall climbing tower that's kind of unique, and don't really have it in the budget right now, but I'd like to at least get that in there and maybe get that up so it's something that's unique to the valley that, you know, can attract the kids there.
You could use the backstop money that we didn't put in and build that.
Well, I got the backstops. They're, they're ready to go in, right, Arnold?
But, Mr. Henry, could you possibly get a swing set down Tierra Park? That three-year-old contingent, one of my constituents talks pretty good. And she said, where's the swing, Arnold? And, you know, she's pretty serious about it.
I ordered the swing set. The swing set and the playground have been ordered. They're on, they're on order.
Yeah, it's like, what, a park and no swing?
I've got a swing set coming to El Paso Park.
I want to relay that message to you. Okay.
All right, are we good, guys?
Yep. If that's direction, sufficient direction.
I think we've got something, something we can work with.
I lose track on is everybody agreed, or is that?
Get seven people to agree is, come on, you get halfway, if you get an eighth of the way, you're happy.
I can do something that everybody will agree on. That's the journey.
Be all favor.
Okay.